Good morning, everyone, and thank you for joining us for Tuesday, August 17th, 2021. It is 8:03, and we are called to order. Supervisor Chair Doppa will be joining us via Zoom today, as well as County Council. So we will open with public comment.
No public comment at this time.
Okay. And then we will go on to closed session agenda.
Item one, pursuant to government code 54957.6, conference with county designator Labor Negotiators Judy Hawkins and Shay Johnson regarding the following employee organizations: Service Employees International Union (SEIU), Local 1021, Deputy Sheriff Association (DSA) Sheriff's Management Unit (SMU). Item two, pursuant to government code 54657B1, Public Employment Title Planning Director.
Thank you. Good morning, and welcome back. At this time, we will start with the public agenda. Oh, yes. We will be reconvening back into closed session after the regular agenda. With this, can you please stand for the torch? Next on the agenda is staff announcement. And I believe we have a few staffers that will be joining us. Who is at first? Ms. Aaron?
Good morning. I want to, sorry, hello, Chair and members of the Board. This is Corey Allen, your Health and Human Services Agency Director. Today with me, I have Mr. Michael Magania, who is filling in for our Public Health Director. We wanted to give a brief update about where we are with our COVID-19 pandemic response. The first thing we needed to acknowledge is that we did yesterday receive the sad notification from the California Department of Public Health that we once again have lost three individuals from our community, a male in the late 40s and two females in their 60s. We here with the County of Calaveras and the Public Health Department want to send our sincerest condolences to the families and the loved ones of those individuals. This news never gets easy to share with you or our community, and it's, again, a reminder of just how critical we are in this fight to end this pandemic. And there are things that we can do as community members that can help interrupt the sharing of this particular virus. So a couple of those talking points that I really want to hit home with you before I pass the torch is protect our households and protect our community. The Delta variant of COVID-19 is much more aggressive than the variants we have seen to date. We've seen that it spreads more easily, more quickly, and will cause serious illness for many. It's more important now than ever that we all do what we can to prevent the spread, regardless of whether we are fully vaccinated or not. We can choose to mask in spaces and separate ourselves from others so that we can continue to interrupt its path. We do continue to ask that everyone mask in indoor settings such as public transit, schools, childcare settings, shelters, cooling centers, in any healthcare setting, long-term setting, or senior facility. If you have symptoms of COVID-19, stay home, call your doctor and get tested. And if you test positive, talk to your doctor for information on what you can do. For those that are not fully vaccinated, there are ways that you can protect yourself. The first and foremost is to choose to vaccinate. Vaccines are found to be safe and effective against serious illness and death from COVID-19. Please get tested. Protect all we've accomplished so far against COVID-19. It is important now more than ever to get vaccinated, get tested, wear a mask, and keep that distance near anyone that you don't live with. Our testing opportunities are so critical, and we are hearing our community ask for more. We have expanded appointments today, August 17th, Thursday, August 19th, from 9:00 to 12:00 at the San Andreas Library. You can go online to make an appointment, but if you don't have internet, there is a phone number, 754-6460. You can schedule an appointment, or you can visit Calaveras COVID-19 website for more information. We also have our Opt-in-Serve State Testing Site in Stenora. They have expanded days of operation. They're now from 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. daily. Now, as of today, they're at Tualami Memorial Hall on Fur Avenue, but starting on the 18th of August, they are moving back to the Motherlode Fairgrounds and will continue to be open daily, 7:00 to 7:00. It will bring that operation closer to us here in Calaveras County. Online appointments, lhi.care/covidtesting. You can find that information on our website. Amador has an Opt-in-Serve State Testing Site. It's open Monday, Wednesday, and Saturday, 7:00 to 7:00, at the Health and Human Services Building at the rear entrance on Conductor Boulevard in Sutter Creek. We're also still actively negotiating to get testing through our mobile vaccination van. That mobile vaccination van operates five days a week. We will push that information out to you as quickly as we get it. Now, Mr. Magania would like to update you on booster doses for those with weakened immune systems and any further information that we can offer.
Thank you, Board. Michael Magania, Health Education Program Manager for Public Health. Booster doses for those with weakened immune systems are now recommended by the CDC. Immunocompromised means those who have a weakened immune system. The CDC recently recommended that people with moderately to severely weakened immune system should get an additional dose of mRNA COVID-19 vaccine, which includes Pfizer or Moderna. People with weakened immune systems may benefit from an additional dose to make sure that they have enough protection against COVID-19. Those with moderately to severely weakened immune systems include those who have been receiving active cancer treatment, those who've had organ transplant and are taking medication or medicine to suppress the immune system, those who have advanced or untreated HIV infection, and those who are actively getting treatment for corticosteroids or other drugs that may also suppress the immune system. People should talk to their healthcare provider about their medical condition and whether or not the additional dose is appropriate for them. They should also, they can also check their local pharmacy to see if they provide the booster, Pfizer, Moderna, to see if it's available in their area. County vaccination sites through either Calaveras Public Health or through the mobile van are not offering COVID-19 booster doses at this time. The ability to provide those booster doses is pending guidance by the California Department of Public Health. Again, COVID-19 vaccines are effective, including against the Delta variant. What we currently know about the Delta variant is that it's more contagious. Corey kind of started discussing that. The Delta variant is actually two times as contagious as the previous variants. What we know early on is that it may cause severe illness in unvaccinated persons, which is really the greatest concern at this point. Unvaccinated people are more likely to be hospitalized than fully vaccinated people for severe illness. And fully vaccinated people can get a breakthrough infection from the Delta variant, which they can spread the virus, but what it appears to be is that they may be infectious for less time than unvaccinated people. People can get vaccinated. We discussed the different testing sites. They should get the COVID-19 vaccine to help protect them against COVID-19. People should get the COVID-19 vaccine as soon as they can. They could also visit myturn.ca.gov, which is the website where they can find walk-in clinics and/or make an appointment.
And with that, thank you. That concludes our presentation today.
Thank you. Is there any other staff?
Robert Packenger?
Mr. Packenger.
Good morning. I wanted to report that yesterday, we released the invitation to bid for the construction of the Wyland Trail Project. So the solicitation for construction services is in the hands of the contractors. It's being advertised through the public purchase system. We've sent out a brief notice to all past contractors that we've worked with. We want to make sure that the word gets out. Bids are due September 23rd. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other staff?
Good morning. Rebecca Turner with Calaveras County Clerk, Recorder, and Registered Voter. I wanted to announce that ballots were mailed out yesterday for the September 14th recall election, and you can return your ballot by mail at any of the drop boxes in the county or at any of the in-person voting locations. Stand address here at our office is now open for in-person voting as of today, and beginning September 11th, the Bret Hart Theater at the High School in Angels Camp and the Veterans Hall in Valley Springs will be open for in-person voting as well. A complete list of drop box locations is located on the backside of the county information guide mailed along with your ballot, and you can contact the elections office toll-free at 833-536-8683 with any questions about your voting options. Thank you.
Any other staff updates or announcements?
No further staff announcements.
Okay. Thank you. With that, we'll move to public comment. Any item of interest to the public that is within the subject matter jurisdiction of the Board and is not posted on the consent or regular agenda may be addressed during the public comment period. Do we have any public comment online? We'll wait a few minutes.
I do not see any public comment at this time.
And there is no public comment in the room. So with that, we will move on to consent agenda. Consent agenda items are expected to be routine and non-conservational. They will be acted upon the Board at one time without discussion. There are currently two agenda, consent agenda items.
Item number three, action item probation. Authorize the Board Chair to sign the Motherlode Regional Juvenile Detention Facility (MOU) Amendment Two, extending the agreement for an additional year, term ending June 30th, 2022. Item four, agreement Behavioral Health Services Mental Health Program. Authorize a Director of Health and Human Services Agency or Designee to, one, apply for the Crisis Care Mobile Units Program, track one planning grant funding; two, sign and submit the required documentation to apply for said grant funding, resulting in revenue in an amount not to exceed $200,000 for the period of September 15th, 2021, through February 14th, 2023; and, three, execute any and all documentation required to receive said funding, including subsequent amendments if any.
With that, is there any Board member that would wish to pull anything from consent agenda? Is there any staff comment? With that, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So movement.
A second?
First by Tofanari, second by Stoppa. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any aye? Passes. Next is regular agenda, number, item number five.
Item number five, action item Administrative Office. One, receive a presentation on strategic planning, and, two, direct the county administrative officer to negotiate an agreement with the Municipal Resources Group for third-party facilitator and strategic planning consulting services.
With that, I will happily turn it over to Krista, and thank you for being here this morning, especially in person. We appreciate it.
Indeed. Thank you, Madam Vice Chair, Mr. Chair, and members of the Board. Thank you very much, Mr. Blacklock, President and CEO of RCRC, Ms. Carolyn Judge, Communications Director for RCRC, and Mr. Robert Bendorf from Municipal Resources Group, who possess tremendous amount of expertise in the strategic planning area and for which we are very fortunate to have here today. Just as a quick overview of where we've been as a county with respect to strategic planning historically, it's kind of been fits and starts, which is why I believe your Board did determine to make this a priority for this current calendar year. You further directed the CAO to create a strategic, you created, rather, a strategic planning and financing committee that is a standing Brown Act committee, which committee has been meeting monthly since April. One of the recommendations of this committee, actually two of which are embodied in this agenda item before you today, is to have this conversation with our guests and, I hope, determine to move forward with negotiating an agreement with the third-party facilitator so that, rather than be another example of the fits and starts of strategic planning that have happened over the past 20-plus years in this county, that we can actually move this, we can move this process forward in a thoughtful way that it will end up being incredibly great for our development in the out years. And with that, I thank you again for being here, and I'll turn it over to RCRC.
Thank you for the introduction, and thank you for having us here today. My name is Pat Blacklock. I am the CEO for RCRC, and with me is Carolyn Judge, as you mentioned, our Communications Director, and Robert Bendorf, who's here behalf of Municipal Resource Group. For Robert and me, it is a warm, comforting feeling to be here with the Board Supervisors because we are longtime CAOs as part of our career, so it feels good to be here today. And I want to say thank you for allowing us to join you. And RCRC is the Rural County Representatives of California. We have 37 member counties, of which Calaveras is one, and we are in the midst of going through a strategic plan process as well. So we thought it timely to be here with you to trade notes on the process and the value of strategic planning, and hopefully we can along the way. You should learn from each other a little bit. I'm going to introduce the item, and then Carolyn, who has been through multiple county strategic plans in her career, will talk us through some of the steps of completing one, and then I know Robert's going to talk a little bit more about next steps specific to Calaveras County, if you go to the next slide. I'm going to jump right into why do we do strategic planning? And the short answer is, it's to provide direction, and it's to provide direction to your department heads, to your, to your staff team, and to give them a sense of where you want to go. And oftentimes, the reaction in county land can be, well, much of what we do is mandated, so why do we need to do this? Because we're told what to do. The reality is that that's true. The big chunk of what we do is mandated, but the way in which we do it, there's some discretion there, and in each of our days, there's just a little bit of discretion of where we put our time and energy. And the strategic plan helps provide direction in where to invest that time and energy and how we complete our mandated mission. So I would argue that it is important in a mandated environment because it helps provide direction, as I mentioned, to the team as they're going about their daily work. But also, there's a very good financial reason for why you put a strategic plan in place, and that is it makes the organization run more efficiently when it is strategically aligned. Another way to look at it is the absence of a strategic plan acts as a tax on the organization. And this slide is meant to demonstrate that. If you look at the top where the, where the arrows are, you'll see that this is meant to stimulate an environment where, oh, wait till this dialogue box comes off. The, whoop. I went.
I was still sharing.
Oh, it's okay. Can the Board Member see it?
Yes.
Okay.
I do believe. Jack, do you have yours?
Okay. Well, if you see where the arrows are pointed in all sorts of different directions, what that is meant to stimulate is a environment without a strategic plan. And so each of those is meant to be a department, and that green arrow to the right is meant to illustrate the Board Supervisors and where you want to go, but in the absence of a strategic plan, there's no alignment. And so what happens is those departments start going in the direction that they think is the best direction, and it may be very well-informed, and it may be good direction, but it may not be where the Board Supervisors wants to go. And so what happens? Well, let's take Public Works for example. They may get a big grant to help strengthen the mass transit system, and it may be fully funded, and it may make all kinds of sense, and they'll put it on consent because there's no general fund impact, it makes a lot of sense, it's the latest best practice for them. But it gets here, and if the Board's priority is paving roads, and there's no mention of that in the staff report, instead, it shows millions of dollars going to a mass transit program, and a lot of staff energy is going to be directed to that over the next few years at the expense, and you're minding the way of roads. What's going to happen? You're going to pull the item, and you're going to say, this doesn't feel right. We need to get some more information. We need to have you come back with some additional analysis. We get that there's no general fund, but something doesn't feel right to us. So the department goes back. Now they're spending more time putting that analysis together. And that's when I say it acts like a tax. That's an example of a tax. There's staff time and energy that's now going in to try and answer that question when, in fact, if there was a strategic plan and that direction was transparent at the beginning, then that Public Works Department would have known, we need to put our time and energy into finding opportunities for paving roads and not have this other opportunity take us astray. So I would argue that the county will become more efficient with a strategic plan, and there'll be a net financial benefit as a result of having a strategic plan. And that's what the arrows at the bottom are meant to illustrate, is that, and admittedly, this is perhaps a perfect model, and it takes a while to get there, and I wouldn't expect anybody to get there anytime soon, but here you see the departments are generally aligned with where the Board Supervisors are going. What happens in that environment? They bring back a grant for a road paving project. It goes on consent. The Board sees it. This is great. The Board may not pull it from consent, but may instead say, I want to take a moment, and say, great work, Public Works. This is exactly what we need. Right on. And the item moves forward, and the project gets done, and it's a much more efficient way to operate. That's a simplistic example of what can come from strategic planning, but I see a very real benefit to the Calaveras Board of moving through this process, and I see a very real financial benefit from doing so. This talks a little bit about process, and I'm going to pause my presentation and turn it over to Carolyn to walk us through process.
Good morning, Board Members. Thank you for having us. Again, my name's Carolyn Judge, and I'm the Communications Director with RCRC. And so kind of what I'll be walking through is more of the fundamentals for strategic planning, so that process that Pat was talking about. So a little bit of kind of the core principles, as well as the, some of the terminology structure, some examples using other counties, and then ultimately kind of the timeline process. So for this slide here, kind of as Pat was talking about, strategic planning is really that guiding document for the Board of Supervisors that helps to kind of guide decision-making over a set period of time, generally about three to five years. And because of that, it should really be aligned with the mission and vision for your organization. And it's kind of what you see in these terminology here is the mission. That's really the purpose of your organization, what you do, why you do it. And the vision is looking further forward at what do you want to achieve. It's kind of that lofty goalpost that you're always kind of striving towards. And so that kind of gives you the what you want to do. The strategic plan outlines how you're going to get there. It's that actionable roadmap of how you're going to implement and achieve those things that you want to achieve. And so that's really kind of the core purpose behind strategic planning. And so because of that, it is a common tool for some counties and for some rural counties. I have some examples pictured there for Yolo County, Madera County, and Alpine County as well, that's in the process of completing their plans. The overall idea behind a strategic plan as well is that you want it to be meaningful for your organization. So as you go through the development process, you'll kind of craft it to best fit what works for you so that it can be a document that is used throughout your organization and really becomes kind of part of your, part of your culture and something that you will want to turn to and look towards frequently. So with that, I'll move into a bit of the structure and terminology. So it is one of the fundamental building blocks is what terminology that you'll ultimately use. And so I have an example of terminology here, but it is not, it's not all-inclusive. These can vary depending on what works best for you. So it can be modified to match the interests of the Board and what makes sense for your organization. So this is just one example that I'll go through. So on the left, I have the terminology, and on the right, an example from Yolo County that utilized that same terminology. So first, at the top, you may be familiar with these already, but as goals, these are broad outcomes that the organization hopes to achieve, and they can be fairly broad and lofty for that reason. For Yolo County, they did a goal of thriving residents. So generally, they, specific things they wanted to achieve for, to help residents thrive. But what does achievement of that actually look like? And that's where the objectives come in, is how do you know when you've achieved that goal of thriving residents? Objectives, these are more measurable. These are measurable outcomes to achieve a goal, and for that reason, you'd often have more than one. For Yolo County, one of their objectives is, was to reduce homelessness countywide, but they did have others related to other topics related to thriving residents as well. Along with this objective, you'd often include a performance metric, and this is so you can track that progress over time. So for Yolo County, reducing homelessness, they looked at the point in time cap, their number of homeless every two years, to see if that's something that's progressing in the direction that they wanted to. So it's kind of their benchmark to see how their plan's doing. For the goals and objectives, these are really telling you what you want to achieve as an organization, similar in a way to when you're looking at your vision and your mission. The next two parts are kind of the meat of your strategic plan, your strategies and your tactics. And these are talking about the, how are you going to do it? How are you going to implement what you want to achieve? So for strategies, these are more specific, specific approaches taken to achieve an objective, and you'd often have multiple for each objective. For Yolo County, I have a couple examples here, and they looked to make these in a way that they could be a little bit more specific and have deadlines that they could track, deadlines and sometimes targets as well. So you'll see that in the, in the strategies there, where one of them is they were going to be looking at improvement options for their local homeless system. That was one approach they wanted to take to reducing homelessness, and they had a deadline by December of 2020. They also had another that looked at securing 70 permanent supportive housing units for their most vulnerable homeless by a specific date. So that, in a way, is another method of being able to track progress in your strategic plan is by having kind of set targets and deadlines for some of your strategies. Underneath that are the tactics, and I will say that these, these are the tools or actionable steps. So they're more specific, often in order, steps that you would take for each strategy in order to implement it. Because of that detail, these may not show up in your strategic plan. This can oftentimes be more of an internal tool within the organization for staff as they're working to implement these, is to kind of lay out the steps that they'll need to take to implement. But overall, the takeaway from here is that these kind of building blocks are really looking at the, what you want to achieve and how you're going to do it, and a determination of how you're going to track progress and what works best for you, and that matters to how detailed you want to get in doing that. I do have one more example here, and this one comes from Madera County. And so for them, they do use a slightly different terminology. For purpose of ease, I've put into the same terminology just to kind of show you the similar building blocks. But so for them, they had a broad goal. Again, this one for them was community, very broad, but they do give a more detailed description talking about how it's involved with really kind of a culture of excellence around their public service, so improving their public service. Two of the objectives that they had under community, one dealt with fiscal responsibility, improving that, and improving customer services. And the strategies, so how they were going to achieve those goals and objectives, was for their fiscal responsibility, one of the strategies was going to be enhancing grant funding, and another, related to improving their customer service, was creating and deploying. funding, and another, related to improving their customer service, was creating and deploying a customer service survey and academy, so a little bit more direct. So you see with those strategies, they're not as specific in terms of deadlines or kind of tracking any targets. So they can be more broad, depending on how you'd, how you'd like to go about your plan. They do however, still have metrics associated with their objectives. So that's how they were really looking to track their progress, is a focus particularly on some of those metrics to see if they were making a difference related to their objectives. But overall, both do still have that main concept of identifying what they want to achieve and how they're going to do it. So I'll move now to the process. And the timeline for process, again, like some of these other things can vary. So it can be anywhere from maybe a few months to a year or more, depending on how detailed you'd like to get into each step along the way. So there's kind of about three main stages, engagement, plan development, and approval before you get to that final strategic plan. The engagement process, this is where you're kind of determining and hearing from people, input as to what the board of supervisors should potentially focus on. So this can be both internal engagement with staff, department leadership, even discussion amongst the board, as well as public engagement piece as well. And this can be where you get information from the general public, as well as some maybe your community-based organizations and other important kind of groups within the community that you work with. And really kind of looking to see what are the key issues that our board should be considering to focus on over the next set period of time, be that three to five years. Once you complete the engagement, that's when you move into plan development. You take all that information that you received, and that's where you start to figure out, what are we going to prioritize? And then how do we go about drafting that into the plan? What are our goals going to be, our objectives and our strategies? And you can work with your staff subject matter experts in those areas to help kind of craft and tool those specifically as to what you'd like. At that same time, while you're drafting the plan, you're also looking at creating, what is that implementation structure going to look like? So you're already kind of preparing for what are we going to be doing once we start to implement this. And that can be identifying who's going to lead some of these efforts that you have in your plan, who's that staff member that's going to help in pushing it forward. It can also look towards how do we want to track progress and how are we going to do that? Are we going to be needing certain data? How is that going to get collected? Are we going to be doing a dashboard, anything along those lines, figuring out what the process for that would be? And also looking towards the idea of marketing the plan. This might also be something that you want to think about at that time. And that can be both internal marketing, so that you make sure that staff, leadership are aware of the plan and are looking towards it frequently, and also external, so with the public. That can be online, or if you're doing a dashboard, that as well, so that it also creates kind of a sense of transparency and accountability with the public as you go through the plan. And then when we move into approval, that's once you have your draft plan and you begin that process of reviewing it, refining it, and ultimately approving it. And once that occurs, then you move into actually having the strategic plan and starting that implementation and evaluation process. And that is something as well, as well where the board would want to consider how frequently you'll want to be looking at your strategic plan, checking in on it, something where maybe at least once a year, you're reviewing it and seeing if any alterations need to be made. And that's a way to ensure that it stays kind of a living document for you, that it's something that's useful, and that it still applies to the current circumstances that your organization's under. So if any significant laws change or events, that that's something that you can make tweaks to as needed, so it stays relevant. And with that, I'll pause there. That brings me to the end of kind of the basic overview. And I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have before turning it over to Robert as well.
I have questions. Good. I have questions, but I guess I'll wait and see if they're answered. Thank you.
No problem. Sorry. I'll turn it over to Robert then.
So I will tell you in very short order, everything she said. That's it. I agree with it. So I'm actually smiling underneath my mask. It's, it's always a challenge when you enter, I think, strategic planning, maybe for a jurisdiction that's never had it before, whether it be a local government agency or a private sector, and because people don't know what to expect. Now, what is the ultimate outcome that we're going to achieve? How's that going to impact me as an individual? How's it going to impact our organization? And I will tell you, probably one of the best examples that I can give you is I was approached by somebody that at the same time, about 15, 16 years ago in Yuba, we set off on a venture after we got a bunch of data, and we basically did sort of a workforce audit of our county, where we were going to head. And they said, "Well, I know you're doing this strategic planning, but really, how does it affect me as an individual?" And this person was a supervisor, not elected supervisor, but a supervisor in a department that I'd known for a while. And I told him that it'll have an impact on you eventually, but more importantly, it's going to have a bigger impact on the organization and the residents that we serve. Because what we feel it provides, it provides really a prescription for something that doesn't heal an organization, but certainly sets you on the right course, like she was mentioning earlier, like Carolyn mentioned and that Pat had mentioned. And it's not easy. There's a little physical therapy involved and a few other things, because there are going to be different opinions on what you achieve, when you achieve it, and what's more important than maybe other things. So I went in to explain, I said, "Give it some time, and we'll see what happens." So this person ended up being part of a Workforce Excellence Committee that we had established. And one of the things that came out of not only our audit of the workforce, but that came out of our strategic planning was the investment in our employees. And I was asked, "Where are we starting this academy?" So 25 employees, doesn't matter which discipline, they attend academy five days, one whole day a month for five months. And we developed a curriculum, and they all go through the class together in the graduate. And they said, "Well, Robert, can you tell us what you'd like in the curriculum?" And I said, "It really doesn't matter to me. It does, but it doesn't." I said, "Why is that?" I said, "Well, what I, consistent with our strategic plan and our Workforce Excellence, it's bigger than just curriculum. I would like an engineer for those five whole days over a five-month period, sitting next to a social worker, sitting next to a human resource analyst, sitting next to a CIO analyst, sitting next to a public health nurse, and all of those folks getting to know each other and find out what, what each other does. And they find out they have more in common than they would ever believe. And I think when you develop a strategic plan, your departments, and if it's done well, and you've got that commitment from the board of supervisors, because they're all looking for your leadership, they are going to perform so much better together because they have more in common than we think and than they think. And I think the strategic plan really ties things together well." And so this person had asked me those questions, and they committed. And after a while, it didn't happen immediately. He says, "I got it. I see where you're going." All these little things are branches off that strategic plan tree, if you will. Some may be measurable, and hopefully quite a few are, but some may not be. They, you can qualify them all day long, but you may not be able to qualify them. So for me, I was talking earlier with a few of your employees in the conference room, and they had asked me, you know, the impression of a strategic plan. And I said, "It always starts with the investment." And is the board willing to make the investment for one? And two, is your organization willing to make the investment? And it's not just financially, but it's time and effort, especially the investment in your people here, your employees in Calaveras. Listen, we're all public servants, right? And that's what they do every day. They provide a service. And so the most support that we can give them is tell them what we'd like to achieve when they're out there providing those great services. So for me, I think Carolyn's right, those terminologies may change a little bit, and in the work that I've done in this area, my approach is, if the organization maybe wants a different term to use, then we go with that term. It's whatever fits the organization best. It really is up to the client or customer or organization, however you want to put that. But when I say commitment, it should be an unwavering commitment. That should be seen through the end of the completion of an actual document, but that commitment goes beyond that. And the reason I tell you that is those are sort of my ground rules. I really would prefer not to work with an organization that's going to put something on paper that follows all those core tenants. And I say, "Hey, we did it. We checked that box," and then it sits on a shelf somewhere. We want to see it used. We want to see it implemented. We want to see it referred to, marketed, and we have ambassadors that really promote the strategic plan and what you're all about here in Calaveras. So one of the things she, that you brought up earlier, Carolyn, was the approach with engagement, development, and implementation. There's one element that goes along with engagement that I wanted to expand upon a little bit, and that's assessment. And as I've told folks before, and even my own organization, that I would prefer that we not proceed with a strategic plan development or an update to a strategic plan unless the organization's ready to do that, and unless the leadership is ready to do that. Because if not, it's really unfair for a consultant or your own staff member to engage in a process where the organization is not ready yet. And so that's part of the assessment. You, when you, when I have performed that assessment, I found out some really interesting things. But I also found out maybe some of the strengths of the organization too, and what can make this strategic plan development process even that much better. And some folks who may not be believers end up being believers after we talk and engage. So that typical assessment involves meeting individually with your leadership team here, meeting individually with board members, just to get to know them a little bit, find out what their district is about, what maybe some of their priorities are for their district or maybe even countywide. But again, putting all those things together and then launch off into a, a couple of get-toethers, you can call them retreats, workshops, whatever they may be, with the board and with your leadership team, to talk about, hey, what does leadership actually mean? How can we apply it here in the context of a strategic plan? How familiar are we with our priorities? How far do we want to go in developing priorities? Is it two? Is it five? Is it 10? Is it 20? What some of those complexities are? So everybody understands the process. Everybody's on the same page, and then we launch. So it, to me, while there is a little bit more engagement there at the beginning, I think it's necessary because I think everyone, from board members to your organization, to your community, whatever that, that comes to as far as input, are all needed. And then development of the plan, implementation, and just like Carolyn said, I don't need to regurgitate that. It really is a timeline that you all most feel comfortable with for your organization. And that's really what I have, that just some of the basics for me as an individual. I've seen them work, seen them work well, and no doubt in my mind, it can work well here in Calaveras.
I believe Ms. Calloway wanted, had some questions or comments? Mr. Bendah, you're going to do an analysis or engage us to see how serious we are. That would be prior to our developing a contract with you or your firm?
It's, it's all wrapped up into the same contract.
So if you feel that we're really not serious collectively, it's a 3-2 vote, or our CIO and her management team are not really into it, we're just, it's the word de jour, then that we can back out of that, correct? That would be your assessment? You would give that assessment?
Oh, yeah, certainly. And I would be working with your county administrator, but you know, I don't think it's a readiness assessment that is a start or stop necessarily. It's sometimes when you do that assessment, it may be just a few adjustments in how we all approach getting the strategic plan core elements completed. Again, it's getting to know the organization and what they want to accomplish, help sort of guide and design the process, specifically to Calaveras.
I mean, we've been discussing this for years, on again, off again, and
Right.
We've never been able to, and maybe we don't have the true commitment to do it. So that's why I ask. The other question, I don't know if it's you or Ms. Judd, how do we relate a strategic, strategic plan to the budget? Because in the budget, every year, you're setting your priorities for the following year, which, how do you dovetail the two?
Yeah, so everybody does it a little bit different. I can tell you, some go through pretty involved measures in relating strategic plan priorities or objectives directly to the budget. So that direction is given to departments, and they put the necessary connectors or correlations in their budget document to the strategic plan. I will tell you that even though it varies greatly, one of the best that I've seen how it's coordinated and better than mine by far is Patrick's in Yolo. So Patrick and I, we, truth be told, we've had an opportunity to teach together the last 10 years. And we teach budget and finance at RCSAC. And this is one of the core elements that we have in our lesson plan, is how those links are so important from the strategic plan to the budget. But I'd like Pat to talk about his experience doing that. It's no different than mine. I just don't want to steal from his
So you two are the new Diane Cummins.
Well, I would say that the budget's where the rubber hits the road in terms of the strategic planning process, and I hearken back to my early days doing the first strategic plan for the county. And there were those that were doubting it, I guess is the best way to put it. And I can say this because he's a friend of mine, but the elected sheriff was one of them. And the sheriff's, "Ah, I'm not going to worry about participating in those. Too many meetings. I don't want to be in those meetings." Okay, sheriff. So we proceeded, and we had our criminal justice-related goals, you might imagine, and there were specific tactics around it. The next year, we're developing the budget, we said, "The first things that could be funded are going to be what's in the strategic plan." That got a lot of attention. And to their credit, the sheriff and DA both came to me and said, "Can we work together to put together an updated criminal justice set of tactics and strategies?" I said, "That sounds great. Love to work with you on that." And we did. And it became something that they embraced as well, and it became something that was part of the budget and the budget funded. And I tell that story just to say that along with the readiness assessment, start and stop and all of that, not everybody's going to be on board at the, at the beginning. The important thing is that the board of supervisors is. The important thing is that the county administrator is. And if you start to put one foot in front of the other, that flywheel's going to start to turn. And as you commit to it, and as they see the budget being committed to it, others are going to come on board, and that flywheel's going to start to turn faster and faster. In an ideal environment, the budget becomes a tool to implement the strategic plan, and the focus shifts from debating, having three days of debates on a budget, to thoughtful preparation of a strategic plan. And once that's in place, it becomes much easier for the county administrator budgeting because you're budgeting the strategic plan, and there leaves less room for debate and question because you've already settled that with your policy direction. So that's a long-winded answer, but hopefully it provides some insight.
And I'm going to provide some more wind, if I, if I may, is we had a similar situation in Yuba when we started working on our strategic plan. Remember, I go back to the quantifying versus qualifying, and I think there's a little bit of both. And one of our core strategic priorities in Yuba was public safety and health. And our budget workshops, everybody had a half hour of time, they would come present. It was more in an intimate setting, and it was really more about operations, had a little bit to do with budget, but we did them after our budget presentation by a month or two. So after a while, when they saw this strategic priority be adopted by the board, probation, DA, and sheriff, they all began presenting together at the budget workshop. They came and approached my office, and they said, "Hey, instead of us individual times, we'd like to do it as a justice unit, and we'd like to be able to present together because that's really is one of the core priorities for the board, and we feel that we should." And that evolved into their budgets as well, et cetera. So things you can't necessarily quantify, Supervisor Calloway, but you can certainly qualify all day long. qualify all day long.
My other question is more of process. When you do your engagement with, I'm assuming, employees, maybe some residents, county partners such as for us, the City of Angels, or the Chamber, or the hospital, do you do that as just you and that group? Or are they done in a board room, you know, in a board meeting? Or is it with them individually?
I would say, I would submit to you that for me, I feel the best way is not necessarily individually. Some, it works better that way. Some will ask sometimes, hey, can we speak to you alone and kind of tell you some things that we'd like to pass along, we don't feel comfortable doing in a larger audience? That happens, that's just reality. And then we have, the primary approach is not just me, I would like somebody there with me, that, or somebody there that maybe is helping monitor the, say, the public input session or the workshop. I want to make sure I hear everything. And as one person, I may not be able to, but having somebody from Calaveras there with me helps me understand the issues a little bit better, too.
Yeah, I guess I was thinking, if you met with our supervisory unit or our
Right.
department, it would be you and that group? It wouldn't be in a formal setting such as a board meeting?
Right, correct.
Okay.
And it really is up to the client. So it would be up to your leadership here on some of those particular issues. I'll ask the question and how you'd like me to proceed, and whatever you're most comfortable with.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Vice Chair. Is there any other board questions or comments? Supervisor Stoppa, you're on the screen. Is the chair Stoppa, I should say?
Thank you, Ms. Fuldorff. I just want to thank you all for coming out and talking to us today. You know, I have a myriad of questions as we move forward, but that will deal with the process, so let's get to moving forward.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you both, thank you all for coming today. I appreciate this. I mean, when you lay it out like this, it seems like a pretty straightforward, a simple project, but when you live it, it's incredibly complex. You know, one of the questions I've got is, how do you go about resolving when you do a strategic plan when you've got competing interests, you know? Maria's priority might be snow removal, Gary doesn't have snow that lands often, maybe once a decade in his district. So, you know, we're going to have different priorities. It's not a problem, that's why it's a good one to use. How do you resolve that? Or does it end up being, do we end up making a strategic plan that just got everything in the kitchen sink in it? Just everything under the sun is a priority. How do you, how would you go about resolving that?
Well, for me, Supervisor Gere, maybe I will tell you, that's certainly the way it starts a lot of times. There are so many priorities that people have, you have this big mountain, right? And it's sometimes a challenge to go through all of those and to whittle them down to something that can be used in a strategic plan that eventually becomes useful. So I'm no stranger to that, and just like your board, there's no strangers to that, trying to compromise in items that appear before you. But I can tell you, I think at the end of the day, we always offer solutions. I think that work, you may not hear a direct correlation with a certain priority, but there's a solution embedded there that provides for, say, for that service to be implemented or enhanced, et cetera. We don't ignore anything, at least it's been my experience. We make sure everything has their fair due, but ultimately, it's your board's decision on those priorities that you'd like to see from a strategic perspective.
Thank you. My second question is, I'm a big believer in what is measured is done, and I think you guys referred to that. When we talk about, we get this document done, and we go back at the end of the year, are we going to have measurable outcomes or some sort to that? I believe that's important, but I would like to see how it's worked in other places.
Short answer is yes. And I don't know how Pat did with Yolo, and it'd be great to hear, but there's a client that I'm working with now, and there is some pushback from some of the folks that have been there a while as far as prioritizing and being involved in the process. And so we thought we'd take an incremental approach, and that is, all the departments, please identify one measurable outcome that you'd like to achieve, at least one for right now, and then we'll build on that. As Carolyn mentioned earlier, this can be a multi-month, a year, or even a few years to get those building blocks in place so you can have those successful outcomes. So while I'd like to commit Supervisor Gere, Mendy, to one in particular, it takes a little bit of time, and if your board wants five measurable outcomes from each department, hey, we can do that, too. But an incremental approach allows everybody to get on board, I think, eventually. Patrick, go.
Maybe I'll probably a little bit of an answer to the first question as well in terms of the prioritization. One of my experiences was the board was debating five goals or four, and the fifth goal was economic development. And the board, going through the process, ultimately determined they didn't have the resources to meaningfully engage in the economic development area at that time, and took it out of the strategic plan. The practical effect that had over the next three years was, there were questions sometimes, and sometimes it came from a board member, hey, we should go do this in the economic development realm, or we should do that. The answer was no, we've got our direction, our resources are over here right now, this is where we're focused, this is where we're putting our time and energy. At the next strategic planning cycle, the board felt we were in a different place and brought it back, and that did reshape the organization. And I say that because I think it is important to have those discussions and to send that clear message to staff on where the priorities are. Secondly, as Carolyn mentioned, and it's your second question, it is really important, I think, to have actionable strategies that are measurable. And then Carolyn's last slide ended on the implementation phase. When you get in that implementation phase, I would argue that this should not be a binder that sits on a shelf. It should be something that the board's taken a look at a couple of times a year at least, checking in on where are we progress related to those strategies? And the beauty of it is, when they're actionable, you can tell, are we making progress? The example with the 70 housing units, have we identified the sites? Yes or no? Are we moving forward with getting funding for those? Those are all measurable things that the board can check in on and adjust. A strategic plan should be adaptive, it's not just locked in place. COVID is a good example. If you had a strategic plan in place at the start of COVID, in all likelihood, you would have done, which we ended up doing, we're just saying, we're hitting the brakes on a number of these things because it's all hands on deck for COVID right now. And so the strategic plan should be adaptive, it should be something you're checking in on, on an annual basis, but even within that year, you're checking in periodically in terms of progress. You know, Carolyn, if you have anything you want to add on the evaluation side?
Yeah, so, so Yolo County had gone through several iterations of strategic planning, and some of the past ones didn't have necessarily some metrics in place. So when we would go to update the board with progress, it made it a little bit more anecdotal, where we were kind of telling stories of what had been done. So when the most recent iteration of the strategic plan happened, that was one of the main things we heard from our board, is being able to measure progress in a more definitive way so that we could better track what we were doing, and it also helps with that accountability piece. So in kind of the measure, or the slide I had shown of that breakdown, we had both metrics, so with data, where we could track progress over kind of longer periods of time for some of those objectives, like homelessness, that could even go beyond the strategic plan. And then we also had in those strategies targets and deadlines. And so there's essentially two ways you could track it. You could have this data piece that shows you for measuring that outcome, and then those specific steps to see if those are getting done, and if you're reaching those targets. So we were able to take those metrics and put it on a dashboard so we could show data to the public, and then also when we're presenting to the board, give them updates on, on where we're at in the timeline of those items. So that was helpful in telling your story and telling progress through transparency.
Thank you very much.
Any other questions or comments by board member? Yeah?
I have a question. With the, going off of the matrix, how do you measure those, translate those metrics into the public? Because the biggest hurdle is always going to be the public and the community. So how do you show that, how that translates to accountability to the board of supervisors and/or the organization itself?
Right. So for me, I think those two things. One is that check in with the board of supervisors in a public setting, whether it's in a workshop setting or a full board of supervisors meeting, to go over progress that you've made and to highlight those things. And whether, whatever vehicle you choose, whether it's a press release or inclusion in published documents of what those accomplishments were, that's a way to do it. Also, I would say that celebrating your accomplishments is key, and I think that's something that's missed more often than caught. And when you accomplish a large project, whether it be a road project, affordable housing, or whatever it may be, celebrate those accomplishments. It not only means a lot to you all as leaders of the organization, but your staff, and ultimately the public. So we can't just go through an accomplishment and then just move on. So Pat, I'm Carolyn, I don't know if you had.
Yeah, so in terms of kind of having those metrics, one of the things that your board will kind of have to decide is what types of metrics you're comfortable with, and kind of taking ownership over, because it could be things that your organization only, you know that you can control the outcomes of it. But sometimes even with homelessness in Yolo County, there can be other factors that might affect that, and putting it in your plan, you can kind of have to have that conversation with the public of, you know, this is a goal that our board has. At the same time, it's something that a lot of partners are involved in and has different factors. So it's kind of, I think, that communication piece when you're doing your plan of, we have these goals for our community, but we understand that these may be beyond just our work being done, but that you're still comfortable showing that and being transparent to the public that these are the things we care about, and we're going to try to help alter these. And at the same time, even if it's something you don't fully control, if you start to see a metric like homelessness increase, it's still something valuable for the public and for you to focus on and be like, all right, maybe we need to change direction, maybe there's some more intervention we need to do. So there can still be value to showing those things. That helps to answer your question.
Yes, thank you. Any other comments? Is there any public comment?
There is no public comment at this time.
Okay, thank you. Then I'll turn it back over to Krista.
So again, thank you so very much. I just to remind your board that in addition to receiving the presentation and having the discussion today to seek your approval for moving forward with negotiating a contract with M G T, so we will require a vote in that regard. But it's been incredibly useful and a great discussion for us to have, and looking forward to the process. Do any of you have any questions for me?
You're looking to enter into a contract with M R V today or getting approval to negotiate a contract with them. We're not going to be presented any other alternatives or other groups' presentation to us for the same thing for strategic plan, we're just going to have this one, I'm calling back to my contractors' status here, that normally I would go, I would have two or three presentations to have some type of idea on which one's the best one to go with, other than just showing the contract on the first one.
So understood, and thank you for that, thank you for that. I will make note of the general distinction between when we go out to bid, for example, for a public contract or any other certain types of procurement, et cetera, whether it's due to funding restrictions or California code, government code, public contract code, as opposed to in a situation where we are looking at hiring a service provider, professional services. So that is not to say that we are precluded from going out and doing an R F P or an R F Q. That is not my recommendation at this time. I do not understand it to be the recommendation of the Strategic Planning and Financing Committee, although I understand your concern. What I'm seeking here is to receive direction, just to take a step back. I think you'll all recall that we had robust discussion at the formation of the Strategic Planning Committee, that regardless of whether a service agreement, for example, would fall under my signing authority as C A O, which typically would not go to board, that with a view towards transparency and being all-inclusive with not just your board, but staff and the public, that we would continue to have these conversations. So I will be asking for budget authority, and the final budget, if this item is approved, we will have that conversation again then, regardless of whether the contract were to ultimately be within my signing authority or without. Does that answer your question, Supervisor Toffanelli?
Well, from what I see, what the committee recommended, just to hear their presentation, which is a very good presentation, thank very much for coming and presenting, but I would still prefer to hear other presentations from other companies.
Understood.
Other than just entering into this contract right now, whether it's your authority or not, I assume it's going to be more than what you have authority designed for. I don't see it being less than $50,000, so.
We have not yet got to that.
We'll have to come back to the board, and there's nothing in the budget for it, so we have to come back to budget time. So I'm still, if they've done what the committee recommended, then I was bringing over at their presentation. And again, I would like to hear other presentations.
Understood. Other feedback?
Supervisor Callaway?
No, I don't have the need to do that. This has been a topic that we've been discussing for years on again. We keep putting our toe in the water, and we keep stumbling, and we've had no life jacket. And I feel like we hire people who are experts in the field to do something that we do not seem to have the skill set to do. Our staff is overwhelmed now with a whole host of things that they are involved in, and that if the C A O recommends that she feels this is the way to go, then my feeling is we need to follow that recommendation. The recommendation could have been, shall we hire an outside consultant? And we would have said yes or no, assuming we said yes, and it's within our signing authority, she would go ahead and do it, we would not be micromanaging the who the C A O picked. So I have no problem with who the C A, who, but we don't do it for all contracts within the signing authority of any of the department heads. We don't look at every single contract that goes out, and in this case, I don't think we need to do that either. The concept of a strategic plan is what was presented to us by R C R C, and it just so happened that Mr. Bendorff was here who has a company, but the bulk of it was from Ms. Judd on what a strategic plan is and are we buying into that concept? So I do support having the C A O negotiate, otherwise we're going to be another year down the road. Because the staff's overwhelmed at the moment, and we need to have some trust in what the C A O is recommending. So that's my thoughts, and I would make the motion that we direct the C A O to negotiate. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair Fuldorff. You know, I understand Mr. Toffanelli's concerns in many cases. I agree with Ms. Callaway 100%. This is something that has befuddled Calaveras County in getting done for as long as I've known, and long before I've known. I also want to say that I've been beating the drum about the strategic plan ever since I I attended these gentleman's class at CSAC about strategic plans because they only make sense and they've been successful at it, and it's been successful for the counties. And I think it's due to not only our constituents, but our employees in the county to set expectations and goals and have a clear roadmap as we proceed. So with that, I'll second the motion.
Name a motion and a second. Call for a vote. Do you want it?
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 All opposed?
No.
Four one. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all very, very much.
We would appreciate your time today.
Thank you very much.
And with that, we're going to take a 10-minute recess?
Perhaps 15.
But yeah. Thank you. Hello, and we will reconvene to the next agenda item. When we go to the next agenda item, Chair Stoppa will not be joining us on Zoom, so it will just be the board members right here in the room. So with that, agenda item number six.
Action item, human resources, discuss and provide recommendations on countywide telecommute policy.
Good morning, members of the board. Judy Hawkins, Human Resources and Risk Management Director. I'm bringing before you today a countywide telecommute policy to provide discussion and recommendation from the board. In the beginning of the pandemic, back in March of 2020, we had put out a lot of different emergency policies. So we were able to provide social distancing in trying to prevent department-wide spread of COVID to keep departments from being quarantined all at once. We did put into, we did put out a interim telecommute policy, and we found that it was beneficial in a lot of different departments and found that there was a requirement for a permanent telecommute policy throughout the county. And this also provides guidance for when we have reasonable accommodations, which requires an employee to telecommute for part of the time, or even when salaried employees or management telecommutes for part of the time. It does provide clear guidance on what is required to telecommute. The policy does allow for departments to be able to make it uniform to their department or specific to their department. And so the policy is not written extremely specific so that departments can, there are areas that we are able to telecommute and then other areas that we're not. It's difficult for a permit tech in the building department to telecommute when they are public facing. And so that's where it's important to have a mechanism to have those conversations with the employees on is their position one that is able to telecommute? And then it provides all of the guidelines. So I am happy to answer any questions that the board has regarding this policy.
Ms. Hawkins?
Yes.
Just, you just brought one up about the permit tech. Well, what if the contractor or member of the public comes to the county and they can have the permit tech on the iPad or whatever laptop and they could talk to the permit tech that way versus having the permit tech behind the counter? I'm just saying, we're looking at work a whole new way. And I mean, this is pretty much a big step for Calaveras. So I'm just saying, there are ways to look at work differently. So maybe you and Doug Oliver could discuss that. That's not my question. I just bring it up because the work world's changing and we need to look at ways to change with it. My concern is with the one that, with their, with children. So, I mean, we can say you can't talk to your kids while you're working because you, I mean, we're talking, let's say, the non-exempt employees who might be working from home. How do we, that is not realistic to me. How, how do we then manage it?
All right. And so just, just to be clear, we are not saying that you can't talk to your kids. One of the things that we are saying is that telecommuting is not intended to be a substitute for daycare. There is a requirement to make sure that we are meeting productivity goals so that employees are able to, be able to get the same amount of work done while they're telecommuting as they would be able to get done when they're in the office. And we also have a mechanism here that if employees are needing to telecommute due to daycare issues, then we can sit down and define how are they going to meet the goals of their workload? How are they going to be able to meet the business needs of their department while also meeting the caregiver needs that they have at home? So we can have those conversations. But there is still the expectation of an employee is able to be as productive when they are telecommuting as they are when they're in the office because there is a business need that has to be met.
So does an employee have to sign? Does an employee have to log in when they come on duty and then log out at the end of the day if they're non-exempt?
So, yes. So they, their, different departments have a different way of tracking the time, and that's also something that is in this policy is each department will have to define how they will track the productivity of the employee.
I guess maybe I should ask the question of Ms. Von Latta, but have our department heads bought into this policy?
So we have been, we have sent the policy out to all of the department heads. I have had the discussion with many department heads. I've had feedback from many department heads. We have had departments ask for a permanent policy for some time so that we have some clear definitions and also requirements that have to be met. There's also other standards. We have to make sure that employees have an ergonomic workspace. They can't just be sitting on their couch with their laptop on their lap working. They have to actually have a defined workspace that they're working in. And so we have been communicating this with department heads, and we have had feedbacks with department heads, as well as HHSA had a committee that of both managers and line staff that gave feedback on the policy.
Are we going to be inspecting their workspaces?
So we, we don't have the staff to go and inspect every single person's workspace. We do have to have the ability that if there is a workplace accident, we have to be able to, on a case-by-case basis, be able to do a inspection, an investigation into the accident.
Thank you.
Supervisor Toffenelli?
Thank you, Madam Chair. First question is, have we consulted with our labor organization, SEIU, on this?
So SE, yes, SEIU has this, has the policy, and we are not going to fully implement until we have all of their feedback. And we were wanting to see if the board had any changes to, to the policy until they, before they gave their final feedback.
We, as a board, will see this again before, once we've got their feedback?
So Sarah, do you want to chime in?
That's up to the discretion of the CAO. This is a policy that the CAO could implement after receiving the board's feedback and feedback from the relevant bargaining units, or if, if the board so directs or she so chose, it could certainly come back to the board as an alternative.
And CEO?
Again, I will defer to the board, but at the end of the day, it's completely possible and what we were kind of recommending in terms of next steps would be to hear your direction, incorporate that into the policy, take it back to SEIU to get their final approval. We would present to them a red line so that they could see the changes based on what they'd already reviewed and preliminarily understood to be the case. And if they were then to, in fact, sign off on it, go ahead and implement the policy without having necessarily bringing it back to the board. But again, should you wish to have final approval, we will most certainly bring back the final policy and it can be board adopted as opposed to CAO implemented. There is no reason why the board would need to formally adopt this policy.
My second question is, and we'll have to obviously circle back on that one. My second one is, what is the cost to the county? We are responsible for providing a safe work environment for our people. So who is supplying equipment? Who is making sure that things are ergonomic? And what are the risks associated with this as far as workers' comp and other unforeseen costs? Have we costed out what this will cost our county? And material costs, please don't get into the psychic value of this.
So I have, I have not costed out the cost to the county as far as what, what materials or computers, those type of things each department has.
Because I mean, we have had ergonomic issues where we've bought people extraordinarily expensive chairs. Do those, do we need to have another one so they can work from home? Or do they take their chair home with them? Or sort of stand-up desks? What are, how are we going to manage this? It's more than just a policy. There are beans and bullets that need to go into this.
So, yes, and that's where employees are signing off that they do have a ergonomic workplace. We are not purchasing furniture for them, for their home. We are, the only equipment that departments would be furnishing, furnishing would be computer equipment.
So is that, this might be a question for counsel, but if I self-certify that, yep, everything on my couch is great, and I could work here and then I get injured, does that liability land with them or does it land with us?
Right.
Regardless of that sign-off, how does that play?
So as Ms. Hawkins indicated, we are going to require employees to have a specific workplace. We're not going to let them self-certify that their couch is okay. It is generally accepted for them to self-certify that their space is ergonomic. And as Ms. Hawkins indicated, we would have the right to inspect that or see pictures, et cetera. And so, you know, I think from my perspective, given that we are going to have some employees working from home in some circumstances, regardless, it is, it is more protective of the county to and of the employees to have this policy in place, or I shouldn't say this policy, to have a policy in place.
So when we go in, we, you know, we obviously have spotty internet and cell phone service throughout our county. How are we going to manage that for people, employees who don't have good internet or cell phone service? How will we certify that that's adequate? Are we going to pay for that, for them to have internet to their house? Cell phones, how, how's that work out?
I believe that that's something that similarly, similarly, it needs to be in place. I think that's part of the reason amongst others why this is going to be department by department. And, you know, managers and department heads will need to figure out what their actual business needs are, what the employees' duties would be, and if those can actually be performed successfully at home. And, and those questions will be part of that decision-making process for managers, I would imagine.
Because I'd want to make sure that we don't create two classes of people. People who live in communities that have good internet and they're allowed to work from home, and those that don't and they're not allowed to work from home. I just want to make sure there's some equity for our employees as well, access to this opportunity if they so should choose. So those are my questions.
So I do want to point out, we do have, unfortunately, right now, we do have some areas in the county. I, I have an employee that works for me. She does not have any access to internet. And so she would not, you know, be able to work from home. And so as much as we will try, you know, as much as we try to make sure that this policy is implemented fair and equally, because we are in a rural setting and we, I have had these conversations with SEIU, some employees may not be able to work from home due to the fact that they live in areas where there is not appropriate access to the, the software that they will need to use.
Which, you just, sorry, Supervisor Toffenelli, please.
Well, I agree with a lot of the things Jack is saying, especially on the workers' comp part of it. And if we're going to be covered, if we're covered with workers' comp from working at home in case of accidents, shouldn't we be requiring them to at least on file have a picture of their workspace so when any investigation goes there from where they're at, you can have the picture and see if the workplace looks similar to what they said they're going to be set up and be working at? I would think the insurance company would be in favor of something like that, at least so we have something on file rather than just them writing certifying that, yeah, it's ergonomic for me and it works. At least we have, you know, I would think that's something we could do. The other thing, I'm sorry, Krista, but this has to come back to us. What I have in front of me says draft, and you're asking us to approve draft that may have changes that from SEIU that you guys agreed to that we had no idea what was going on. But what's in front of me right here, right now, has got draft all over it. I can't, I'm not going to vote for something that's a draft. It's not the final product.
That's, that's absolutely right, Supervisor Toffenelli. If we were asking, if Judy and Krista were asking to vote on this today, the idea for today is to get feedback that will be incorporated into the final version, not to vote on this as being some sort of final document.
Because Krista was saying it may not come back to us, but until I see the final draft rates come in, I have a final copy of what I'm voting on, I can't vote on it. It could be changed, this draft.
I think what they were telling us is that we don't, we may not vote on this. This is, did I understand that correctly? This is under your authority, not ours?
It is certainly the board's purview to set policy as the board. So you may set whatever policy, level of policy your board wishes to do. There are policies, let me see if I can. There are policies, let me see if I can think of a good example off the top of my head, but.
We have been allowing.
Address, oh, sorry, go ahead.
We have been allowing work at home for over a year, and now we're going to say, well, we don't want to. I mean, in concept, we have. But I think the question to Ms. Von Latta is, does this even really need to come to us, because we've already allowed or said we could have telecommuting?
So, right, and this is part of kind of a larger conversation, and that we will, if you'll recall, we'll be bringing back a discussion on policies this fall per our study session schedule. But there is a question. You know, there's the, the kind of big-picture policy level that the Board sets, and then there's the more day-to-day policy procedurals that would really be, in my opinion, although, again, deferring to your Board, too granular to bring to the Board every single one of them. So policies that have come before you, where we have sought your approval are, for example, the budget and finance policy, are, for example, the grant policy. That's because there are specific thresholds that, even if not legally mandated, we understand as past practice that your Board would, has seen in the past and might expect to see. We have had for more than a year, probably on the order of about 16 months, kind of an urgency policy, teleworks policy, so to speak. Technically, that policy expired on June 15th, when the Governor's order went into effect, basically reopening California. What we have identified here, what HR, and I believe counsel is trying, and I reiterate, is that we are exposed as a county, and agreed, it doesn't have to be this policy, and your Board may or may not decide that it wants to vote on the final iteration. But the general guidance that we have, the general kind of principle that we have used when determining whether to bring a policy to Board is whether it's, it's countywide, but despite the fact that we bring it, it's one thing to bring it, seek your input, incorporate that input, and then so long as the final document that we produce is consistent with that input, go ahead and CAO directs staff to implement it, as opposed to bringing each and every policy to the Board for final approval, regardless of whether it, it has things like statutory thresholds and whatnot in it. So the, the goal, for example, with the purchasing policy, just to give you like a separate way to think about it, would be to bring the ordinance to the Board, get the Board to approve the ordinance, also bring at the same time the policy itself, but not to, the, the policy follows the ordinance. So once we have Board approval, Board input, and a finally adopted ordinance, staff would take the guidance that went into that discussion, incorporate it into the policy, and then the policy would stand on its own without necessarily having Board approval. So, you know, again, that's, that's up for your Board to determine how it wants to move forward, but we would need clear criteria in terms of, because they don't know that you want to be signing off on a parking policy, or a dress code policy, or there are a host of, of policies that I wouldn't necessarily expect your Board would want to see. That would be quite onerous, quite frankly, in terms of time.
Supervisor Toffenelli?
And I understand what you're saying, Krista, but I think this is different, this particular policy is different than us, there's no ordinance attached to it. This is, this is basically what we're saying going forward. Yes, Marie is correct, we have allowed it during the pandemic because we had to. But now if we're looking at a policy that makes it permanent, that couldn't happen. And, and I'm looking, I see what your recommendation says, but it's also says type of document, action item. So we're not just giving you, from what I'm looking at, the recommendations, we're having a discussion on it. When it says action item, when we, when we have this discussion, then that's what it's going to be. And I would like to see the final product that comes out of this, because one, as Judy has said, and Jackie brought up, and one of my questions, what the costs are. I, I would like to see what the final costs are going to be, and what it will cost the county when this is fully implemented. And, and what the final product ends up being for a countywide employee policy. It's a little bit different than the, some of the other policies that you're talking about, parking or what have you, or a policy that has an ordinance attached, the Board's already set, you know, this is it, this is the ordinance, you develop the policy.
Agreed, and that's why it's here before you today, rather than simply being implemented and deployed at the staff level. So, so I couldn't agree more. It may more properly have been agendized, quite frankly, as an informational item, because we really are only seeking direction from the Board. You know, to direct staff to go forth, incorporate your direction, get sign-off from a union, and so long as no, no other changes or material changes anyway are made, to go ahead and deploy it, that's your Board's prerogative. I do recommend having a more robust discussion on, on what criteria the Board wants to use for when it wants to see policies in the fall when we bring this item back. We, you know, for, if not to sound silly, but could use a policy on policies, as we could use many policies in this county. But we have plenty that have been implemented over time that do affect the entire county. I'll give you, I'm pretty sure the Auditor's Office could give us examples of payroll policies, HR could give us, you know, there, there are plenty. But I understand that this has been an issue of much debate, and that we are unprecedented in times, and that we're quite happy, staff is quite happy to take whatever direction you wish to give us today.
Any other Board comments or questions? Any staff? It will go to public comment?
There is no public comment at this time?
Since this is informational and just feedback, we don't need to, we don't need to call for a vote. Just to clarify, do you guys get what you feel you got from the Board? Or need to move forward? I still think we need to come back with the final, final, obviously, but to Supervisor Toffenelli's point, just to see what are the expectations of the employees?
If I may, would it be possible for the Board to give us clear direction on whether they would like this particular policy to come back as an action item, which will be then a Board-adopted policy, as opposed to an info item where the Board merely confirms, perhaps by poll, that it is, believes that the final document is consistent with direction given by the Board and approves any subsequent changes which would, would have been made to affect that?
Supervisor Toffenelli?
Action item.
Supervisor Callaway?
Yes.
Supervisor Garmendi?
Yes.
The contenders.
So yes for action item?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you, Judy.
Okay, so just so that I'm clear, we will look at adding some, some type of proof of the ergonomic workspace, and then also the cost from, from the departments on what this policy will ultimately cost the county. And was there any other, I think those were the only two changes?
I think. I think that's pretty accurate, Judy.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Judy.
All right, thank you.
And with that, we move on to Supervisor Annamet. And I will go to my last Supervisor, Toffenelli.
I have nothing to report.
I'll be going on a tour of the Tuolumne Animal Shelter this week, and this past Saturday, Public Works had a community meeting on the Blagan Road Bridge turnout, and I have to compliment them on how well they made the presentation and really were prepared for all questions and concerns that came before them. That's all.
Nothing? And I have nothing to report. And with that, we will close, and reconvene closer, in the close session. Thank you.